Good evening. I'd like to convene the Regular Board of Education open session at 6:30 PM on the dot. I'd like to also introduce Clifton Middle School and Principal Ashley Leoni to do the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board President Hammond, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Hart Rotis, and members of the community. Thank you Christine and Eden. You guys did a fantastic job. Eden is representing Clifton's dual, Spanish Dual Language Program. Recently, students, as you can see pictured, worked in pairs to explore a Spanish-speaking country of their choice. Each pair researched the country's culture and history. They showcased their learning by creating an informative poster. The Spanish Department is also helping Clifton celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with lunchtime activities. Christine, our president, is representing Clifton's leadership. Our dedicated and energetic leadership students have been hard at work bringing fun activities, school spirit, and meaningful support to our campus community. I am extremely proud of these two ladies, and they are a great representation of not only Clifton but the Monrovia community.
Thank you very much. And once you get your certificate, we'd like to have a photo with you. That's okay?
I apologize. I didn't address the board correctly. I didn't realize Mr. Hammond was up here.
You're perfectly fine. Thanks. We will proceed with roll call. President Hammond is excused this evening, and so is Dr. Landis Fine. There's no reportable information from closed session. And for order of business, are there any changes? Okay. I do have one change in moving up the superintendent's goals to right after the Measure MM staff presentation. Make note of that item.
That would be item B, district goals.
Yes. Move that right after Measure MM from Board Business.
Ms. Masara, do you have that ready to go? Thank you.
And the reason I am requesting to move that up is when we, I'd like a broader audience to be able to hear the district's goals. I think they're very important. All right. Then if there are no other changes, we'll move on to recognitions and communication. The Board of Education recognizes, I'm sorry, did I skip the minutes? I sure did. The minutes from the last board meeting held on September 24th, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yeah, I'm sorry, abstain. I was not here for the last meeting.
Motion carries three and one abstention.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to recognitions and communications. The Board of Education recognizes Ken Singleton for more than 40 years of service to our country and has returned from duty. Turn it over to Dr. Giraud.
Good evening, Board Vice President Travanti, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Hart Rotis, fellow cabinet members, and members of the community. Tonight, it is my honor to acknowledge the extraordinary service of our very own Ken Singleton, otherwise known as Major Kenneth Singleton, who recently returned from a deployment overseas. As many know, Ken has served as our Director of Food Services since 2011, but what some people may not know about Ken is that he has served in the US Army for the past 40 years.
Wow.
Major Singleton has earned many accolades over his military career, including the prestigious Meritorious Service Award, which he has been awarded five times now. In his most recent mission, he worked with the Land Power Division in Saudi Arabia overseeing a multi-billion dollar budget and supervising teams in both Saudi Arabia and Huntsville, Alabama at the same time somehow. After 40 years of service, Major Singleton is preparing to retire from the Army next April, and he is proud that his son has followed his footsteps into the Army. And Ken, we deeply appreciate your service to our country and of course, all of your contributions to the health and welfare of our students. Thank you.
Okay, flowers, you got that? There you go, sir. The board's gonna want to come up with you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll go up here.
Paula Hart Rotis, and Sandy, Monrovia and community, thank you. Thank you for the support, the immense and tremendous support that you've given me. I know that I've, it seemed like I've probably been gone more than I've been in Monrovia, but I have a very, very capable and strong team. The support of the, our administration over the years has, you know, put my mind at ease and let me go over there and do the things to secure the safety of our country. And so, looking forward, it's a bittersweet feeling getting ready to retire. It seemed like I've been doing it most of my life. It has been most of my life. And, but I just look forward to relaxing and enjoying some of the fruits of my labor. And glad to see as my son takes the reins and continue on with the lineage of military service in my family, the country is in good hands. Not only that, I know we have other members with family members that are serving, and the country is in good hand. Honor to God. I have to say that because, yeah, he's the one that's gotten me through especially my trip to Afghanistan. And so, again, bittersweet. Thank you, Monrovia, for having me back. Thank you for all of the support. Thank you, Sandy, for keeping food services number one in the district. Thank you. I won't keep you long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Truly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to have you back. The Board of Education recognizes Sandy Castro for her contribution as the Interim Director of Food Services.
Tonight, I also get the pleasure to acknowledge the extraordinary service of Castro, who stepped in as our interim Director of Food Services last January and served until this past week. Sandy is joined tonight by her husband Luis, her son Luis Jr., who is third grade, I think, at Mayflower, and not to be forgotten, her daughter Isabella, who is also a kindergarten student at Mayflower. Sandy has served as the Cafeteria Manager at Mayflower since 2011, at least since then, where she has earned a reputation for preparing high-quality meals that are both healthy and appealing to students. In January, as she stepped into the director role, she hit the ground running, quickly building a cooperative rapport with the food service team at all of our sites, and immersing herself in budgets, purchasing, compliance monitoring with the food services team at the district office. Sandy has many strengths. She approached interim director role with dedication, thoughtfulness, and heart, and in a period of time, she had a significant impact. Among her accomplishments, she applied for and received CEP eligibility for Clifton, Monrovia High School, and Mayflower, which means all of our schools are now eligible for free meals for all students. She, yeah, that's worth it. She applied for and received an extended breakfast grant for Canyon Oaks High School, which will provide our students with additional opportunities to make sure they don't miss a meal, and she increased the amount of fresh fruits and vegetables that are served to our students. Sandy, we are so grateful for the exceptional work that you've done, and we acknowledge the positive impact you continue to have on our students. Congratulations.
Come on up, Sandy. Okay, moving on to board member reports. Ms. Lockerbie, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At our last board meeting, I gave an apology to our aquatics students, and that was for not communicating that we heard them, and not communicating that we, as a board, have been working on the issues that they brought to us. It was clear that they felt frustrated, and my apology was sincere because communication works best when it goes in two directions, right? So, they had been talking and we had been listening, but we didn't communicate, I'm speaking for myself, I didn't communicate that I had heard them and that we had heard them. To the point of communication, especially as it goes in two directions, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the organization of a school board makes communicating in two directions often convoluted and often difficult, but it is possible. And we, as board members, have been talking about the bond for years, and I just want to make sure that I, that I'm being heard. Because recently, there have been talks about spending bond money on the pool and why we haven't done that. And what I wanted to mention again, that we have been mentioning for several years, is this is what drives our priorities. This is the Facility Needs Report that was done by an outside agency in 2018 and delivered to the Board in 2019. Now, it's pretty thick, it's pretty dense, it's very well organized, and it's something that I have brought to the dais, to the community before, as have other of my colleagues, current and past. What this report, what this report says is what we need to spend money on to make our facilities up to code and into the modern era in terms of repairs. As our colleague President Hammond says, I won't use his term, but they're not necessarily flashy things or very visual things, but absolutely things that we need. Things like HVAC, roofs, plumbing, the age of our, of our portable buildings, all sorts of issues within our facilities. The price tag for what we need to upgrade in our district total is over $340 million, and that's 2019 money. So obviously, that number is larger. The bond that we asked from the public, and we are also the public, is $75 million. We have a fantastic project management company, Dixon and Associates, who has been working with us to address these priorities for our district, and not only address these $300 million worth of priorities with $75 million, but also leverage the money that we have to help stretch it, to help do everything that we can for our students, for our staff, for our community, for our buildings, for our safety. I'm not saying right now that we are not going to spend money on other things. What I am explaining once again to the community is what drives our priorities. The promises that we made to the community, the promises that we made to our tax dollars and how we spend them are based on this facility needs report that we have been talking about for several years, actually. After the last board meeting, I contacted Dr. Paula Hart Rotis, our superintendent, and I asked her if she would please print out some more copies of this, which she did, and I thank you very much for that. There is now a copy that lives in the lobby. If you are interested in seeing what our facility's needs are, you can come to the district office and check it out or see it in the lobby, and it's also on our district webpage. So, the information is there, the information has been there, and I appreciate the opportunity to have communication flow in two different directions. That ends my board report.
Thank you, Ms. Lockerbie. I'll go ahead and read off my report for this evening, and I want to preface it by the fact that I was gone last meeting. I was celebrating retirement and anniversary on a cruise, so I, I'm sorry I missed the meeting, but I did, I did watch it on the YouTube channel, so I know what, what went through that meeting and decisions that were made and public comments and so forth. So, over the last few years, it seems school board members have become, become the punching bags of society. Much of this frustration, I believe, comes from decisions made at the national level that local board members have no control over. Still, the anger often lands on us. Let me start by saying that every parent has the absolute right to advocate for their child and for their programs they care about. That advocacy is part of what makes public education strong. But while parents may fight for a single issue or program, school board members must make decisions that balance the needs of all students and staff. Every board member here has them, has made themselves available to talk. Our phone numbers and email addresses are public on the district website. We're your neighbors, taxpayers, and community members, just like you. Our role is to ensure students are safe, that they receive a high-quality education, and that we remain fiscally responsible in the process. Our decisions are always based on the best information available at the time, and yes, sometimes new information requires us to pivot. When that happens, it's not inconsistency, it's responsiveness. It means we're doing what's best for students. It's easy to come to public comments and say what's on your mind. That's your right, and we want to hear you. But when comments come across into rudeness or personal attacks, it undermines meaningful advocacy. Disagreement is healthy, disrespect is not. The view from the seat is wider than the view from the audience. We oversee the operations of the entire district for a stipend of about $300 a month, but still, it's never been about the money. It's because we care deeply about this community, the children, and their future. Next year, two board seats will open. If you're passionate about schools, I encourage you to run. I've said before, I'm happy to meet with anyone interested in sharing the time commitment, expectations, and challenges, but also the real impact you can make. But I caution you, you will lose friends. Relationships will become strained or transactional, and people will treat you differently. A recent Ed Source article says that 56% of school board races in 2024 did not actually appear on the ballot. That's because in those races, either no one ran, or only one person ran unopposed, making them instant winners. When I first ran in 2018, you elected me because of my good judgment, professionalism, and experience both as a parent and a federal policy and operations. Since then, this board has faced one challenge after another. COVID, school closures, debates over masks and vaccinations, leadership changes, Measure MM, fiscal stabilization plans, community criticism, staff concerns, and now coming up, difficult conversations about closing a middle school. So yes, it's your right to speak critically. We hear you, and we do listen. But let's remember why we're here, to serve students. We all want the same thing, the best possible educational experience for every child, preparing them for college, career, and life. We look forward to working together to achieve this. Thank you. And now, we're on to student board member report, and we have Callie Zuffel with us.
Thank you, Board Vice President Travanti, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Hart Rotis, members of the Cabinet, and members of the Monrovia community. Good evening to you all. It is my honor to present this report on behalf of the Staffelton Students of Monrovia High School. Breaking Down the Walls was a tremendous success at MHS a few weeks ago, and over 150 students participated in this two-day event where we learned a lot about each other and about ourselves. This program can be a game changer on our campus, and we are grateful to have been able to host it this year. We are celebrating our senior fall sport athletes this month, and we celebrated our flag football seniors about two hours ago. Football band and cheer seniors will be celebrated this Friday night before the football game, and this week's Cat City theme is a blackout. Next Tuesday, we will celebrate our girls' volleyball senior athletes, and on the 16th, we will celebrate our senior cross-country athletes. Senior boys' water polo is celebrated on October 21st, and girls' tennis is our last senior celebration, taking place on October 23rd. Life in Wildcat Country is busy and exciting, to say the least. We have reached the month of October, which of course means we're fully into homecoming season. We will be celebrating Homecoming 2025, a night in Athens on October 25th, and we will kick off Hoco Week with a Monday spirit rally on October 20th. Each day of Hoco Week, there will be lunchtime activities featuring our Hoco Court leading up to the homecoming game on Friday, October 24th. We will be continuing our tradition of having a pink-out-for-homecoming to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month and a fireworks spectacular after the crowning of our homecoming royalty. The next night, we will welcome our Wildcats to the Homecoming Dance on campus in our friendship circle from 7:00 to 11:00 PM. Tickets are still on sale for one more week. Ticket sales close on Friday, October 17th at 4:00 PM. And lastly, our Renaissance program attended the World's Greatest School Conference, which is designed to uncover innovative strategies that connect individuals to events, activities, and each other. We were also one out of four schools rewarded with the Digital Rockstar Award for being heavily active on social media in a positive way. The ASB Leadership Program attends their CADA conference on October 21st, and we are very excited to apply what we learned there onto our school campus. We are extremely proud of the momentum we are building this year, both in school spirit and student engagement, and we look forward to what's ahead and are excited to keep pushing forward together. Thank you for listening.
Great report. Thank you. It's such an exciting time of the year, and it seems like everywhere you turn, there's an activity or something going on, so have fun with all of that. Thank you. All right, and, oh, the screen. Now, the superintendent report, Dr. Hart Rotis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Hello, everyone, and everyone at home. It's been a busy couple of weeks here since we were last together. Most recently, we enjoyed our fall edition of Read Across Monrovia, and once again, hundreds of volunteers descended on our elementary schools and our preschool to read to our students. It's one of my favorite days of the year. I read a book this year to some sixth graders about the first black female journalist allowed in the White House, Press Corps, and it was a really neat story, and I got to share my day at Plymouth with Dr. Giraud and Edward from the Business Services Office. We had a great time. It's just such a neat tradition. I love that we get to take a few I love that we get to take a few minutes out of our day a couple times a year, and it's always neat to me to see the variety of folks that sign up to be readers. So, you know, some of us, all the regular folks who love to do it, but I get to meet so many wonderful people from our community who sign up. This year, I met a mom and a grandmother who were both alumni of the schools, so it was really neat. And then, you know, their children, the children, the grandchildren were students at the school, so it was pretty cool. And I just, I'm so thankful for our partnership with Monrovia Reads and that we get to do this twice a year, so that was super exciting last week. We have our middle school consolidation information meetings coming up. They're on the district website. These are the informational meetings that we've been talking about for most of the year now. These are the meetings that, where we are sharing with our public the information to compare the sites so that we can collect feedback from you. As you may recall, we are a district in financial stabilization, which is different from a district that's in what's called financial distress. And the way that the county and the state delineate that is in stabilization, we are making choices, and the board has been wonderful in helping us through and making decisions through the work of Dr. Giroux's department and, and, and our team to make some hard decisions, to lead us and make decisions about our budget and what we're doing within our organization to prevent us from getting to a point of being in distress. A district that's in distress is when the county or the state sends in a monitor or someone to govern your financial system, when you no longer have control. So in order to prevent that, we've been doing the things we've been doing in our fiscal stabilization program for the last year and the work we're continuing now. So what we've been doing all along, even though we were not in distress, is we've been following all of the best practice guidelines from the State of California, CDE, just as though we were in distress, so we've been following along. And so these are the next steps of what you would do in consolidating a school. And in order to do that, you have to look at a comparison of the two sites on a variety of things: the facility, the number of classrooms, the square footage of the field, the capacity of each site, its ability to accommodate additional students should the enrollment go up again, the operating costs of each site, the special programs that are available at each site, and decisions around where, would you continue them once the consolidation occurs, the surrounding community around each site, the environmental factors, how close is it to a freeway, what's the walkability of the neighborhood, the crime statistics, is it in a residential area, is it in a business area? There's all kinds of different comparison pieces that the best practices from the CDE ask you to look at. And so in these consolidation informational meetings, we are going to present to everyone and anyone who comes, the comparison, and then at the end, be able to present everyone there with a short survey that asks you to then, based on this information that you've seen, ask some short questions to give the board and our team your input on helping us make choices. And then after we've done all of these meetings, our team will collate all of that information and utilize that to help us formulate our recommendations to the board for the November meeting. We have two in-person meetings at the Clifton Auditorium, two in-person meetings at the Santa Fe Auditorium, and then two virtual meetings on Google Meets. When we scan the QR code, Ms. Becerra, that takes us to the
District calendar.
The district calendar, so that you can see all of them there. I'm told by Mr. Golosani, we should not have any problems with the occupancy in the virtual meetings, and it should be good. Dr. Giroux and I are ready to, to be able to provide everyone with all this information. Thank you to Dylan Feek and his assistant for providing us with the data for the neighborhood information, walkability and all of the environmental information. They were incredibly helpful. And thank you to Mr. Nava and his team for all of the local information so that we can be able to provide families and our, our, our community with this comparability data. That's, those are coming up very quickly. Thank you to the Clifton and the Santa Fe teams for hosting us on those days. Lastly, October, Callie mentioned it, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. My sister is a survivor, and so this is in honor of her, I want to remind everyone, both men and women, by the way. My grandmother did not survive, and that was long before I was born. We carry the gene. My sister's a survivor. Two of my very good friends are also survivors. We have colleagues in our, our employ, like Lisa Dolls and, and other folks I'm sure out there who are survivors. And in honor of those brave people, I just want to remind you to get checked and watch out for yourself. It's something you always have to be careful of, and so please, 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 get checked. If you're a husband of a wife, make her get checked. Get your mammograms. It's never too early. Please, please, please take care of yourself, ladies and gentlemen, because men can get it too. So that is the end of my report.
Dr. Hart-Rodas, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Please.
In regards to the consolidation meetings that you're having, would you be willing to reach out to Dylan Feek and ask him to put those dates in his city manager's report so it gets out
Yes, yes ma'am.
Into the community? Thank you.
Of course.
I also have a question, and maybe this is for Mr. Golosani, but on the virtual options, do they need to, do folks need to register to receive a link to that, to make Zoom or Google Meets or something?
No, in, in the Google Meets, in the calendar invite that's there, and when we post, when we send it out, the link will be able to be there.
Okay, thank you.
One other point of clarification, the agenda didn't have the virtual meetings, so I'm assuming Parent Square will be flooded also with this information posted on our website.
Correct, yes, we will send many, many, many. Ms. Thomas and I have already talked about that.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to public comments. The Board of Education encourages public participation, invites you to share your views on school business. Please complete the Addressing the Board of Education form if you haven't already. Ms. Becerra, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. And are there any public comments for items on the open session agenda?
Yes, I would like to call Karen DeCle to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote yes on this emergency resolution 2526-1, and thank you for reaching out and working with our partners in the city of Monrovia to come up with a temporary solution for the pool. It bolsters me and the community when we see the business lines of communication open between the city and the schools, especially when it comes to our shared spaces like the pool and, and the parson play program, which is going to be restored, which is amazing. I was encouraged to hear Mr. Hammond emphasize that this is not a long-term solution and that you don't plan to punt this problem again, but I do have one bone to pick. I've heard on a few occasions now that Measure MM was never intended for the pool, that it was just thrown in there. If you look at the priorities list, it's kind of at the bottom. We threw in the kitchen sink, whatever, but that's just simply not the case. The bond measure that was sent home to voters lists athletic facilities and specifically the pool as item number four out of 11. Section 3A of the resolution that we voted on listed the pool higher than fences, communication systems, clocks, fire alarms and security cameras, which happened to be the very last item on the list. And to be clear, I'm not saying that the pool is more important than the security cameras, but I'm saying if you're giving me the argument that if you look at the order on the list, well, that explanation just doesn't hold water. I've heard mentioned a few times that we've known about the condition of the pool for years, decades even, and if that's the case, it sounds like you knew about the pool when you were writing Measure MM. So I guess I wonder why didn't you put it on there? The answer to me is you did, but now we're saying not really. Fine. Humoring that, so what was your plan? What was your plan for the last 10 years and more? You've known about this. I'm hoping tonight for a vote on item J2, yes on J2C, but I'm also hoping to hear, I hinted a realistic hope for a long-term solution for our pool. I gotta be honest, I'm a bird-in-the-hand kind of girl, and right now, we have 4.5 million unallocated birds in our hand. I'm nervous about anything that depends on what ifs and when we have, right now. The entity of MUSD, like Dr. Hart-Rodas just alluded to, not these people sitting at this dais who are mostly new, but the entity does not have great public opinion with money management, and I don't see how we would get more money from anyone if we don't do what we said with the bond measure they already gave us. I'm not interested in banging my head against the wall with Measure MM. If it's a no, it's a no. Please give me a realistic new direction to follow in. I will follow your lead. I'm here, like you said, we're all on the same side. I just want that solution. That seemed like the most realistic one to me, but if there's a better one, I'm really excited to hear it. And thank you for this temporary fix and a yes vote on Resolution 2526-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeCle.
I have a clarifying question of Ms. DeCle. I know that you came in after our board reports.
Yes. I'm on kid duty tonight.
So I just wanted to, since I have to phrase it in the form of a, of a question, are you aware that our facilities needs report is now currently available physically in our district lobby?
And it's been available online for a while. I had a chance to look through it. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Ms. Becerra, are there any other public comments on the open session agenda?
There are none.
Thank you very much. We will move on to staff presentations, Measure MM and facilities update. Dr. Giroux?
Good evening, Board Vice President Travanti, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hart-Rodas, fellow cabinet members and members of the community. Tonight, I'll be sharing our Measure MM and facilities update, and first I'll share that we have, on tonight's agenda for your consideration, architectural recommendations for both Plymouth and Wildrose for modernization. We selected the architects from a pre-approved pool, and the recommendations of award were based on the cost, their schedule, and of course, the scope of work. And the scoring was conducted by partnership with our, between our district staff and, and our partners at Dixon and Associates. We scored the two projects separately to make sure we could get the detailed proposals. Both architectural firms scored similarly, and so the decision was to give each the award for a different project based on the scoring and in the spirit of using public funds appropriately, and also gives us a chance to see their work as we move forward with other projects too. Last week, we presented, actually, I think two weeks ago, we presented to Moody's Rating Agency, and we received their updated rating, and we, we, they maintained a strong rating. Actually, it's above average for school districts, it's a AA3 rating, which means it's favorable, it signals to investors that we are a safe investment, it lowers the interest rate for our taxpayers, it saves them, especially over the long term. It saves, just as we talked about refinancing the other one, this is a similar idea that we, the lower the rate, it saves them, saves our taxpayers' money, and it, it signals fiscal responsibility for our district. And Moody's in particular cited our, the board, our district's prudent fiscal practices as a strength. Based on the board's direction at our last meeting, we have reached out, we, we are, for your consideration tonight, considering a emergency resolution for the high school, for the Monrovia High School pool due to safety concerns and the urgency of the repair based on supporting our aquatics programs. Last week, we did obtain an updated scope and cost of the repair work, and we're working, we've also worked collaboratively with the city, and to move forward as efficiently as possible while being responsible about the scope of work, the timeline of it, but we, we feel like we're pretty close to coming to an agreement that we can share with you as well. So we've tried to expedite this. We hope repairs can begin within the next two weeks. So based, based on the decision tonight, that will help us guide our decisions as far as the timeline. And any questions that you have?
Hey, any questions for Dr. Giroux?
I did have a question. You, you pretty much answered it, but it's also in the agenda later, so I think I'll answer it, or I'll ask it right now, if you don't mind. Why exactly do we have different architectural firms for the two different projects? And I'm of course not presuming that they wouldn't be on the same page in terms of our focus, but does that, how do, how do we have two different companies and maintain, you know, the, the, the vision?
Sure. I think
And, and I'm sorry, and does that make it more difficult for like Mr. Nava or your department to have, or Dixon and Associates to have two different companies?
Thank you. One distinction, when we have projects like the video cameras or the project that we hope to begin sometime in their future, the PA systems, it's a district-wide project, having uniformity with that is crucial. The modernization is really unique to each site, like there are different challenges at each site as far as, you know, what needs to be repaired, or we also, as a district, can set the, the standard. If there's a certain product or something we want, we let whichever architectural firm know this is what we're expecting. I think often, one architectural firm might rise to, might have the, the most qualifying bid for both projects, but given that they were both equally qualified, it made sense to, the team decided that it made sense to go, to give each a project and allow us to see their work. In, in theory, it could actually speed up the work because they're doing, they could be working at the same time. I'm sure their, our staff will be challenged as we would in any case, but we'll have to make sure we keep up with that. But our goal, of course, is to get the projects, start the work in the summertime, some of the heavy lifting, so, but that's our plan.
Any other questions for Dr. Giroux? One thing I, I just, I want to congratulate this district for that AA3 rating. That is fantastic. That will help us when we go to purchase our bonds, and that's, that is great news. So thank you for letting us know about that. Also, it was mentioned earlier about having money, so it's always good to have money to get more money. Some of these grants and things at the state level and federal level have a matching requirement. You have to prove that you have this chunk of money before they give their chunk of money. And that's where Ms. Lockerbie alluded to the fact that, you know, we're trying to stretch the, the bond money. We only asked for 75 million. Remember when we asked, we were coming out of COVID, asking $300 million was not anything that, in anybody's appetite. We went for the category that we had to, you know, fix things and modernize things and get in compliance on things, and then with safety and security in mind. So with the 75 million, we're trying to stretch that so it's more, and we can use more for our district. So that's what it, what, what Ms. Lockerbie was speaking to. You have to have money to get more money. All right, thank you. If there are no other questions, I think we're good here. Thank you, Dr. Giroux. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's goals, moving it from the action area over to presentation. Dr. Hart-Rodas? Hartrotus.
Have slides. Hi, everyone. Actually, I'm comfortable over here. I spent a lot of time over here before. So thank you for bringing this forward. This is our second year. We started last year for the first time, bringing our district goals to the board meeting because our staff knows what our district goals are. Because in the first meeting of the year, I stand up in front of all 600 of you and say, hey, this is what I want you to get to this year. This is what I, the work that I want us to achieve, the work that I want us to strive to this year. And we brought this to a board meeting for the board to accept last year for the first time. I'm not sure really if we did this before, but this is a thing that I brought last year because I wanted our public to know what we're doing every day. What, yes, we're reading and writing and doing math and science and PE and art and all those things, but these are the challenges I set out in front of our, our team for us to work towards so that you know, the public knows what we're, what we're working on every day. See if I can do this right. Ta-da. So the first goal for this year is to increase our math achievement across, by 2% across all student groups through focused cohesive math instruction. And this is a graph that I shared with our team at the beginning of this year. And this is a reflection of what we did last year because I asked them to do this last year as well. And it doesn't seem like a big deal. We've been working for the last several years, actually, three to be exact, to try to get back to our pre-pandemic, ooh, am I talking too loud, pre-pandemic achievement levels. And right down there at the bottom, 201819, that's the pre-pandemic numbers. We were at 43% at met or exceeded standard. That's 43%. And this year, we had a all, 2.5, 2.46, I'm going to round up, math people, 2.5% gain. And we're now at 42%. We are almost at just five years past the pandemic. We are almost to our goal of reaching pre-pandemic levels. But that's not only exciting, because that's huge to me, right? We went up. But we went up in a year when we changed the entire curriculum for every single student in our district. We asked every single teacher to start with a new curriculum last year. And not only did they not have a backslide, which statistically, that's what happens, right? They went up. Our teachers did amazing work here. So I said, well, heck, you guys can do that again. Let's do that again. I know you can, and they will. So I challenged them again, so let's do that again. Let's raise it again, 2% again next year, because I know they can. And we're going to surpass that pre-pandemic level, I know, by next year, because they are more than capable, our kids are more than capable. So that's our first goal, to raise across all levels 2%. Questions on that one? Okay. Our second goal is the year before, I asked them to, again, reduce our chronic absenteeism because we know that when kids aren't in school, it's more difficult to learn. And we're also trying to get back to our pre-pandemic attendance levels, which was around 96% as a district. I challenged us to get to 12% because we'd gotten pretty close the year before. We only made it to 13 last year, but I think we're doing pretty darn good. So for this year, I've challenged us to reduce our chronic absenteeism to 10%, which is below the state average, by the way. So that will get us down there. I think, again, we are capable. Last year, our ADA, our average daily attendance was 94.2%. So we're eking our way back up. You can see from the graph, we are already below on chronic absenteeism where we were before the pandemic. So we're already doing better than we were before the pandemic in terms of chronic absenteeism. So we've already made gains there. So this bar here is before the pandemic. We were at 14.78% chronic absenteeism rate. We ended up last year at 13%. So we've already improved to before, pre-pandemic levels on our chronic absenteeism. Now we just got to get a couple more percentage better. Oops, oops, oh, we're just kidding. Ah, too far. A couple more percentage better on our attendance. And if you saw those stats from MHS, 95.2, right? MHS is making some stuff happen over there, Kelly. All that stuff you guys are doing is working. So I think we're going to make that 96%. Kids in seats, that's how we learn. Goal number three, now this one, for my non educator friends out there watching and some of them sitting in this room, this one is a little odd to folks. They don't understand what this means. This is a lot of ed you speak, and I'm apologizing in advance for all the acronyms to my friends who hate acronyms. This is, I know, to continue building our multi-tiered, multi-domain system of support. We call that the MTMDSS, right? That spans academic, college and career, and social emotional domains. This is, if you can imagine, a huge network of supports that reaches across, you can see, it almost looks like a guitar neck to me, three domains of support for our students in academic supports, college and career supports, and social emotional supports. It kind of looks more like a triangle, but this is, this is spread out. Where the base of the triangle is where everyone gets this, this has universal supports. This is the things that we do for everyone. And these are both proactive, stuff that we're doing because everybody should have it, and also reactive, things that we're doing because we see a need. And everyone gets them. And this can be everything in social emotional, like greeting folks at the door. How you doing? Right? Checking in. I know when we went on our school walks, there's, I love the elementary schools, a little sign on the door, how do you want to be greeted today? Do you want a fist bump? You want a high five? Do you want a hug? Or, or the feelings check-ins that I've seen in middle schools where you come in and you have your number and you put where I am today, your clip on as I walk into the classroom. Those are universal proactive strategies within the social emotional tier one MTMDSS strategies that we're doing for everyone. Just those little things. So that's part of our tier one. We've been working on that. And a lot of this stuff, we've already been doing, but we weren't calling it that. So a big piece of what we've been doing the last year and this year is giving it a name so that across the district, across all of our classrooms, we're talking the same language, right? The other piece that we're working intensively on last year and this year is building that second layer, that tier two. This is where it's a higher level of support. This is for some of our kids. This is 20%. Most kids don't need this level of support in any one of those veins. This is their, for our kids who, they have a greater need. There's more consultation, more collaboration, small groups, individual referrals for a smaller group of folks who that bottom layer just doesn't meet needs. And then as we continue to refine that, moving into next year, building and refining up to that third tier, those are individual, really high level, which should only be about 5% of your population. Those have really very, very specific needs, right? And then there's a whole group, it's like off pyramid. That's very, very, very special. Maybe one in 100, right? That's just a whole other group of folks. But we're working on this, and we know this is going to take us three or four years to really get this right. And Dr. Zee and Mr. Moses and Dr. Jones and I really worked hard on, we've started this journey with our, our leaders in, in building this out and really defining this at our site level and eventually being able to have this very robust document at all of our sites as well as at our district so that parents, students, teachers can be aware of what all are available to them within each of these domains at all times, across all campuses, and that we're all talking the same language. But it's a journey we're just starting. You're going to keep hearing me talk about it. You've heard Dr. Jones talk about it. For example, last spring, he talked about that. He talked about our elementary counseling program. And these are where their tier one, tier two, tier three things are happening in our elementary schools around counseling and in the social emotional learning, about what we're doing at the high school counseling program around attendance, what they're doing around suicide prevention. So we've been talking about it. You've heard it before. This is just really focusing on building it district-wide. Our fourth goal is talking about raising achievement levels for all students in core subject areas by 2% and closing performance gaps for some very specific groups of students who have been chronically underperforming in our district. You've seen the dashboard data before, right? And we've seen the little rainbow and it looks like a little speedometer before. But this year, we're so fortunate that our amazing data, I have forgotten Ms. Grouse's title, data, her superpower title, that, that, that one stinks. I don't like that title. We have to give her one. She's, Data's superpower, she's like a superhero of data. She found this magic spreadsheet, is what I'm going to call it, where she was able to download all of our data. And we can disaggregate it for, by school, by district, and by any little piece of information and look at how students are, and we can drill down to how well they did on any little piece of any of these different assessments. So for example, this is how our Hispanic and Latinx students performed last year on the math and the CAS, the science assessment last year. So we want to make sure that these students perform at least 2% better next year. And we can take these scores and look at those students and drill down and look at their, down to the test question and look at where they had difficulty. And our teachers can work with that data and really be able to pinpoint where we need to do work, right? We can look at our English learners. This is how they performed. We want to make those at least 2% better by next year. Do you need me to go back?
No. What's that last?
CAS, the California Science, the science assessment.
So those two columns on the far right?
Mm-hmm. Only 2.67% of the kids scored proficient or advanced. It's not pretty. We need to do better. Our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, right? And our students with disabilities. So these are what our goals are. This is what our current information has. But with this particular tool, we are so much more, so much better armed to be able to really see where our students are having difficulty and our teachers and our leaders at our sites have so much more at their fingertips to be able to better understand. Whereas before, all we had to look at really, oops, was this, this, this silly little rainbow thing. Right? There wasn't as much for us to look at and to dig through. I'm sorry, you can't hear me down out there in TV land. And we have so much more to look at. And, and it's so much more powerful. And I know that those conversations through our ed leadership meetings and, and working on our staircase and what's our, what's our goal to get there. Those are our four goals for the year. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Hartrotus.
Do you want to stay up there?
Well, if you want me to flip through the slides, then I have to stay here.
Okay. I, if you wouldn't mind going to your math data slide. So this is a very difficult slide to look at because the increase in our scores is absolutely a celebration. It's congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you for the encouragement that you have given and the tools that you have given to our staff to be able to raise up our students, to make improvements. That's absolutely something to celebrate. And there are some districts and some superintendents that don't see improvement. And we see an improvement. And that's something that I want to highlight and thank you for. On the other hand, what we're all looking at is 42% proficiency. And that's alarming. And I, I do want to address it, I, I want to address it because I'm excited, you're excited, we're excited that we're getting closer, but there's the acknowledgement that we need to do better and we need to do way better. So, and, and I know that you know that, and I know that you're working towards that. It's just something that I wanted to basically highlight and, and make a comment because we all know that that's, that's something that you know and that all of, all of our staff are working to improve. If you could go to the, one of the pyramid, so the, at the bottom, I don't know if anyone can see it, but at the bottom of this, and it's not really a pyramid, it's sort of a pyramid, I'm going to call it pyramid.
Pyramid-esque.
At the bottom, all the way across and in each column, it's data. Data, data, data. So data is important to me. Data is something that I'd like for the board to see because that's how we know how to do our jobs, right? So I want to ask that we be shared that data. We, we have that data shared with us. As you've done tonight, and I appreciate that, because, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that everyone's looking at the data, right? All the way down. So you need to be looking at it, your cabinet needs to be looking at it and sharing that with the principals, the principals share it with the teachers and stuff like, as it goes, but we need to see that. That, we need to see that that information, we, we need to see the flow. We know that it's there. We know that your work, I appreciate your vision, but we need to see it.
Oh, absolutely. And, and that's in, in the building of this is part of with our teams, and in fact, Dr. Zee and I were just talking about this earlier today, is we're still determining, Dr. Zee and I can't sit in that little room over there and say, this is the data we're going to use to measure this. We have to work on that with our teams as we're building this program. So we have to meet with our teams in those different domains at the different levels and determine as a group with our leaders, what is the accurate data? What is the appropriate data that's going to be relevant for us to measure, that's going to tell us whether or not this piece is working?
Right.
Right? And so that's the conversation we started just this, July 29th, right over in the community room.
And, and I appreciate that, and I know, I know that you're doing that.
And so as we build those pieces out and we have data to share, I know that Mr. Moses is working on, we're, we're working on, on planning in February, I believe, to bring first semester data to present to the board for February. So we may have some of this for some tier one information to share, but that's part of what we're doing as we're designing this and building it first at the school sites and then expanding it to district-wide. Because we have to agree on, you know, what is appropriate college and career level data to analyze for third grade? How do we know that a college and career lesson was successful for third graders? Like what's appropriate measurement tool for that? How do we know that a social emotional intervention worked at seventh grade? And we have to decide across all of our sites and across the district. So as we make those decisions and are, are starting to collect data, we can definitely share that.
Appreciate that. I don't mean to drop a thought that has just dropped into my head with you.
Drop away.
I, I know last year, President Hammond had asked that the, the board and our mission and vision was put in every, like a, framed and put into every school lobby. Could we have, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, they're on the posters that has the Board of Education on them.
Right? I, I'd love something like this. I'd love something like this in every school site somewhere so that everyone can see what, what, what we're doing. I, I know that our district goals are in, on the website, and you talk about it often. I'd love to physically see that when you walk into the office, when you walk into the school. These, these are our goals right here.
That's easy enough. That's easy enough.
I just, I think that would be a nice visual. But again, just popped into my head, so I apologize.
Easy enough.
Thank you. And then your, if you could scroll through. So something like that, something like that. When you share with the board data like this and moving forward in the future, what I'm interested in seeing is, and not necessarily about our vulnerable population, but just when data is shared. What I like to see is not only the years. So if we're looking, for instance, if we're looking at summative scores. I don't, if you could disaggregate it more so that we could follow a cohort. So we want to see what's happening in third, fourth, fifth grade rate. But also, what is important to me is to see the cohort so that I can see this whole grade, the movement that they did in terms of their, their data. So we can see what went on in the cohort, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's some of the work that Mr. Moses and I have talked about for, for sharing later. This is a brand-new tool, so unfortunately I can't, we can't share.
Right. I didn't mean specifically this one. But just to let you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something that I'd like to see.
That's work that Mr. Moses and I've shared with him for their presentation.
Fantastic, is disaggregating. And I know it takes, it's a heavy lift. And so I thought I'd mention it now because we'd like to see, you know, the broad overview and then we'd like to get as granular as is possible.
Anytime, anytime you want to come hang out with me and this has really.
Careful, you know I will.
I know you will.
Thank you. Those are all of my questions, comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lockerbie.
I just quickly wanted to share that I agree with Ms. Lockerbie's request for data. I have had a number of conversations with you about this. I don't feel the need to publicly ask any questions other than to say I agree that we need that data.
Thank you. I'm glad we have the Hispanic Latinx slide up there. Can we also look at the English learner one again? Do you have a hypothesis for the cast score being 2.67? I'm, I'm thinking there were maybe a lot of students that didn't take it. So, but I could be wrong because that's a very low score.
We've talked about Dr. Z.
Yes. So first of all, the reason you see only 75 scores total there, just because that number looks small, I think, what is that? So this is only fifth, eighth, and once in high school, 11th or 12th grade. So it's only those three grade levels. And of those three grade levels, only students who are still classified or haven't reclassified, right, as English language learners. So kind of like hidden in that number is that as kids get older in Monrovia Unified School District, they are reclassifying. That's good news. We saw 90-plus kids, right? Okay, so there's that piece, right?
Tell me the grades again.
So five, eight, and 11 or 12.
11 or 12.
The, the other piece right here is what it does tell us. It, it's a text-heavy, it's a language-heavy exam, number one. Number two, we have to put more emphasis on this exam, right? It's, there are some challenges, especially at the high school. This is, this, that exam's competing with APs and classes that mean people need to take in order to graduate high school. And it's like, by the way, there's this exam too. So those are things we're working on, right? To bring this to the forefront en peño, right? We have to really focus on this. And so the other piece too behind this is what this demonstrates, that 75, those are true language learners. Because we have rigor in when we do reclassify in this school district. And if you haven't reclassified and you really are a language learners, what we don't see here, but to your point with regards to granular data, is we have students who arrived in this country during high school. It's probably almost, it could be as high as I'd say 25 to 30% of those 75 kids. And so they truly are, they're working at a basic interpersonal communication skills level of, you know, English, basic commands. May I use the restroom? What time is it, right? And so then they're being asked questions on thermodynamics, right? Balancing equations, right? Mitosis, et cetera. So, and, and, and that's another thing with the cast too, is remember it's comprehensive, right? So it spans, like, you might have learned something 30 months prior to the test, right? Most of us don't study for a test and then take it 30 months afterwards. We've dealt with that for decades in, in state testing. But so there, there are, those are some of the challenges that we want to tackle, improve upon, and, and really see growth around. I hope that explains though that 75 because it is, it's, it's nuts to look at, right? You know, it's a call to action.
Yeah, definitely a call to action there. I'm glad you've identified the issues and then worked with them. So if you do have newly arrived, registered high school students that are non-English speaking, I mean, it's like immediate intervention right there.
Absolutely. Because the, the truth of the matter is too, that some kids arrive to a high school. Mathematically, they know they're not going to graduate. You know, that's, and that's not, that's something that was beyond their control, right? That's another discussion, right? And so that, that becomes a challenge for us to make sure that we can do as much as we can for those students by the time they finish their schooling age.
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate the presentation on the goals. Thank you.
Anything, questions?
Hey, that concludes our staff presentations. We'll move on to the consent.
For Vice President Trevanti.
I'm sorry.
This was an action item. We need to take a vote.
It was an action item. Well, then I'll entertain a motion on the approval of the goals. The goals.
Move, move to approve.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second.
Board Member Ocon.
Can I amend that? Can I approve the goals with the understanding that we'll get some form of visuals out as soon as it's available? So that, I'm amending my motion to approve the goals with, move forward to have a visual posted in our schools as soon as possible.
And you are good with your second?
Yeah, a second.
With that amendment? Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Becerra?
Thank you. Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Trevanti?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Consent agenda, routine items of business placed on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by members of the staff and will be acted upon by the board with one motion upon request of any person. Any item on the consent agenda may be considered separately. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Trevanti?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, moving on to action items. First item is under Educational Services, Dr. Zamariba, a staffing agreement with Emergus Healthcare Staffing. I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce that right.
That was perfect. Thank you, Board Vice President Trevanti. The Board of Education is requested to approve the staffing agreement with Emergus Healthcare Staffing for parent educator support, nursing staff, speech-language pathologists, and other special education-related service providers.
Thank you, Dr. Zamariba. Any questions? For Gomez Tagle, you look like you have a question. I could be wrong.
Thank you for that, Vice President Trevanti. With this agreement, are these positions that we've tried to fill internally and are unable to do so, is that the issue that we are having?
It is. So we, but we are actively continuing to seek to fill these internally and will continue to do so.
So this is just temporary basis? We are definitely doing our best. We are advertising where we can.
Yes.
And seeking that right individual that could be watching this very stream right now.
It's a great, I love that.
Look up our adjoin.
I like the value you're adding to our YouTube presentation this evening. Yes, absolutely. That's it. And so, and, and we use these with a lot of prudence and really try to find the best fit for each case, for each student, and for each need. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Trevanti?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Moving to the next action item, agreement between UWorld of Learning and Monrovia High School.
The Board of Education is requested to approve an agreement with UWorld of Learning to strengthen advanced placement outcomes at Monrovia High School. This partnership provides onsite intensive training and ongoing support for site administrators, counselors, and teaching teams involved in advanced placement AP courses. Funded through an AP readiness grant awarded to Monrovia Unified School District, the program also offers students access to supplemental curriculum resources to strengthen AP preparedness.
Thank you, Dr. Zamariba. Any questions? Ms. Lockerbie?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is important for our AP students and it's important for our teachers to get, our AP teachers to get support in any way that they can. And I appreciate this being brought to us. For something of this nature to be successful, it needs fidelity. And in order for fidelity to not be a dirty word, there needs to be buy-in. Can you tell me about the discussion that has, or the input that you have gotten from our AP teachers at the high school?
So this was a grant, right? And this is, this is a grant, right? And so we're very excited for this opportunity. It offers some, some great resources to our teachers. We have shared some of the parameters of the grant and what it can do with the teachers. Also, for the teachers, excuse me, also, I think one, in discussing this with Mr. Moses, one of the, really the things that was attractive to us about this grant is these are, it's going to build upon practices they're already employing. And I hope it, it does, the hope is that it does give them more of the tools and ability to really break down their AP data the way we would do with, say, ASBAC data. So like, it's, it's going to have elements like the tool that Dr. Hart wrote us just shared in goal number four from, that Ms. Grouse was able to provide us with this year. Similarly, what this is going to do is give teachers the tools that when they are in their professional learning communities and when they work together as teams and collaborate, that they can dive into their AB data, data, AP data, excuse me, at a deeper level to really discern gaps, areas for growth, areas of need. And so, but, but your, your point is well-taken with regards to fidelity, right?
So thank you for that information. I really do appreciate it. My question is, what input, what communication has happened between the cabinet and the teachers? Have, has there been outreach? This is what we're intending to bring to you? What are your thoughts? Or have they brought it to you and said, you know, this is what we want? What has the communication with the teachers been?
It was brought to them and there was receptiveness to it. We did not go into detail about that, right? But there has been a general broad consensus around receptiveness to this. Which, again, that's a very perceptive observation because they're at the heart, when we do endeavor upon things like this, we need to ensure that we have that support and buy-in, yes.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. My next question is, College Board is convoluted and complex and deep and vast. How confident are you, or how knowledgeable are you about the access to or understanding of College Board? That they will be up to date with the processes that happen within College Board in regards to testing? For instance, are you confident that UWorld is, will know if a test is changing? Or if different subject areas will be covered than had been before? Things like that. Do you understand?
Yes, that's a great question. And yes, that was part of the, the discussion when looking into this grant. So we know that alterations, changes, right? Evolutions, if you will, continue year to year with AP, right? And that's a big part of this, right? So UWorld is working in concert and does understand those changes from AP and College Board. And that is a piece of this. And that's absolutely for our, for our students. That's a piece of important capital, if you will, that we make sure that we give our students the most up-to-date information and learning possible with regards to what will be measured on each year's AP test. That's sort of the impetus of why we're, you know, elected to take on this grant was so that we could enhance that and improve upon that.
That's fantastic.
Yes, we, I hope that, that's a really big piece.
That does answer that question. Thank you. My final question is, what implications would having access to this program, if you will, or this, this support, if you will, to expanding the reach to access for our students? So right now, we have so many students that take AP tests. Would support like this be supportive enough to be able to get more students, create more on-ramps for students to be able to take AP tests? Does that question make sense?
I do. It does. I think you're getting at how we would, like, by, this is deep. This is really like instruction-based, like, type of learning. And so deep within that is like, if we become better as a group of educators at, at, if we improve our practice around a certain subject or class, then it does merit the conversation that we should be able to invite more learners to the table of equity through taking AP classes. And I think it does start with, or a critical piece to that, is that we are able to really understand with a depth of knowledge how to tackle the rigor and the demands of AP courses. And, and, and that's a very insightful question. Thank you. I don't know, I have to, I think there's more to that question than just UWorld, but.
I think, yeah, I think maybe.
That's a piece of it.
To make it more simple is, can we use this support for non-AP teachers to help expand the, the pathway to taking AP classes? But we can.
Great idea. Yeah, I would love to. Great idea. Yeah, I would love to discuss that further because some of this is, this has to be based upon the, like, what's gonna be required in that exam in May of 2026. It has to follow that blueprint, if you will, right? And therefore, that's where I think the bang, the, I don't wanna say bang for a buck, but that's where, where we can see fruit, bear fruit for, especially Class of 2026, right? But, but all students who take AP classes.
Thank you. But if I can, to your end, good strategies are good strategies. So, what they learn there, there's no reason why they can't then take those same intervention strategies and say, hey, Steph, I learned this great thing. Let me show you the thing I did, and use that in our own professional development to share strategies within our own teaching force. So, yes, absolutely, it can, not necessarily by UWorld, but within our own biosphere of MUSD, definitely.
Any other questions? I do have, I do have a couple of questions. So, just looking at the contract, this is just for one year. So it expires in June of '26. So, what I would ask is that we then do an analysis, you know, did this work? What, get some feedback from the teachers, right? The educators that actually put this to work, and was this a solid program? Did this help them? Were there good strategies? And is this something that we want to, you know, apply for an additional grant, grant in the future, or anything like that? I'd be very interested to find out if this worked or not, and if we had full participation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, data, as Celine said, the data. I wanna remind everybody, we, for several years now, have been paying all the AP fees, the Advanced Placement tests or exam fees for our students. That was to even the playing field. It was an equity thing, and I think it's, it was a great decision to, to move forward with that. The backside of that is that when you don't have any skin in the game, and you haven't paid those fees yourself, or your parents, or your guardians, or whoever, they're not taken as seriously. And we have seen a dip in scores. So, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're making an investment and that we're, that our high schools are really playing their part to ensure that our students are taking all these AP exams seriously and supporting them in every way that we can. And, and I do believe that you, we should give UWorld a shot here, because it does support the training and the instruction for the AP exams. And we want all our students to be successful. And we certainly don't want the fees to be in the way. And it doesn't mean that they're, you know, economically challenged, but a lot of our students take four or five exams, AP exams. That's a lot of money. So, I'm glad that we support them that way, and I'm glad that you brought a program like this. And we're waiting to see what the data shows.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just have to say that, you know, one of the things, you, you brought up access, and that is important to us, and that's a piece of it, because we have to continue what we, what we've done, we've made strides in making sure more sections are available to students, because that's a big part of it, too. There is a thing called an AP score, but the fact that you have that AP class and that learning, which this, part of this, the intent here is to improve that, right? To improve that experience for those students, being in that class is, is, is a big victory for many kids in and of itself. And then there's another thing called the AP exam. So, I think part of that access piece, too, is looking at also the amount of students at our high schools that are taking, or in this case, Monrovia High School, that are taking AP classes. And that's, because that's like one of those intermediate indicators that we need to continue to work on as well. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti? Motion carries five zero. Four zero.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I lost my page here.
Six.
Here we go. Okay. Next item on the agenda is agreement with USER Inc.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the agreement with USER Inc. for software development and services that will allow staff to log behavioral health services provided to students. The agreement with USER Incorporated will support the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, CYBHI, program by providing software where staff can log services in real time when they do not have access to a computer. The software is both HIPAA and FIRPA compliant. USER will also provide user training and technical support for this software.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Zamoriba. You're off the hook, and now we'll move on to business services with Dr. Giraud. First item is AB 1200, Public Disclosure Proposed Tentative Agreements.
The Board of Education is requested to receive a disclosure for public information regarding agreements, revised salary schedules dating back to July 1, 2022, between the Monrovia Unified School District and the California School Employee Association, or CSEA, and Monrovia USD and Classified Management and Confidential Employees.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Resolution 2526-14 proclaiming October 13 through the 17, 2025, as National School Lunch Week. Dr. Giraud?
The Board of Education is requested to adopt Resolution Number 2526-14 proclaiming the week of October 13 through 17, 2025, as National School Lunch Week. Read the rest, maybe, or?
Um, no, I, I think we're good.
Okay.
Any questions, comments?
Ms. Lockerbie?
I always like for us to be invited to whatever site we'd like to go to, because I'd like, I like to see what we're, what we're offering our students. And if you could extend that invitation to us, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. I think, I think it was in the last update, but I printed out again just to make sure, because I anticipated that. So, yes, absolutely invited.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I believe the governor today just signed something about the nutrition program. Mr. Singleton, I see you back there. We don't have the details, but something was signed today, so we'll have to do an update of what that's about in the near future, what those new requirements are for nutrition. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
And I'd like to just express a, a thank you to our Food Services Department that always does an amazing job throughout the district at all of our sites, and making sure that our children are fed. Good stuff. So, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 2526-15, declaring an emergency and authorizing emergency repairs to the Monrovia High School Swimming Pool.
The Board of Education is requested to adopt Emergency Resolution Number 2526-15, declaring an emergency and authorizing emergency repairs to the Monrovia High School Swimming Pool.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie? Board Vice President?
Sorry, yes.
Oh, sorry. Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, let's get moving on this. Thank you. Next item, Architectural Services Agreement with PPK for Plymouth Elementary School Modernization Project.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the proposal with PPK Architects to assess, design, coordinate, administer, and implement architectural services and support construction administration to complete the district's Measure MM Modernization Plan.
Any questions for Dr. Giraud?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's right. I just have an ask, and, and I'll, with this item and the next, the Wild Rose, it'll be the same ask, that there will be communication going out to the parents, staff, and everybody in that community for Plymouth Elementary, keeping them in constant communication of what this modernization project is, and also holding a meeting to advise everybody of what, what it's going to look like, what to expect, the challenges, you know, because anytime you go through a modernization project, it's, it's, you know, it's dusty. There are things that, that need to happen, and there are some inconveniences, although I know we will do our best to avoid as many as possible, but there will be some. So, that is my ask. Now, I'll entertain a motion, please. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Architectural Services Proposal with Westburg White for Wild Rose Elementary School Modernization.
The Board of Education is requested to approve the proposal by Westburg White Architectures to assess, design, coordinate, administer, and implement architectural services and support construction administration to complete the district's Measure MM Modernization Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Giraud. Any questions, comments? And that'll be my same, the same ask, the communication piece and the meeting. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Hey, moving on to Human Resources, Ms., Dr. Landisfine is not in, so I believe Dr. Hart Rotis will be leading us.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The next one, Memorandum of Understanding with the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20, establishing a new bargaining unit classification, buyer. The Board of Education is requested to approve Memorandum of Understanding with CSEA creating the new position of buyer. The district and union have agreed to add the new classification of buyer to the bargaining unit.
Questions, concerns? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Point of clarification, I'm sorry, there's an A and a B. Am I supposed to, are we moving to B? Yes, okay.
Moving on to B, Memorandum of Understanding with California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20, establishing a new bargaining unit classification for event coordinator. The Board of Education is requested to approve a Memorandum of Understanding with CSEA creating a new position of event coordinator. The district and the union have agreed to add a new classified position, event coordinator, to the bargaining unit.
Questions? Who is doing the work for the event coordinator? I mean, I know this is a new position, but who's doing that work previously?
Last year was a combination of Susan Noggle, Leanna, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Susan, Sharon, Sharon Noggle. I know, I'm looking at Susan. That's who's in that office now. Sharon Noggle, Leanna, Joy, me, Christie, Krista, about six different people. Now, hopefully will be one person. Prior to that, it was Krista and Patrick. Prior to that, I'm not really sure who was doing it before that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Enter, oh, any other questions?
Yeah, well, comment, we've discussed this item. One of the expectations of this role is also dealing with Facilitron. And Facilitron is something that admins have been trying to navigate, and team, you know, coaches, and various different, kind of everybody, or, or anybody. So, that's, you know, that's also in, in terms of the, the duties and how they're spread out, there's, it's, it's multifaceted.
That's correct. Great, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to item C, Memorandum of Understanding with California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20, Changes to Library Technician 1 and Library Technician 2. The Board of Education is requested to approve the two Memorandums of Understanding with CSEA making revisions to job specifications for the Library Media Specialist 2, and reclassifying incumbent Library Technician 1 to Library Media Specialist 2. The MOU also increases the hours of all reclassified library technicians.
Questions? All right, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Perfect. Item D.
Item D, Memorandum of Understanding with California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20, establishing a new bargaining unit classification, instructional assistant, physical education. The Board of Education is requested to approve Memorandum of Understanding with CSEA creating a new position of instructional assistant, physical education. This Memorandum of Understanding establishes a new classification for instructional assistant, physical education position within the Monrovia Unified School District's bargaining unit structure.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question, and this goes for all of the others that we've just voted on. How soon after approving these will these all be posted on our edjoin and other places where we advertise our jobs?
Rather quickly.
Thank you.
Like tomorrow.
Like tomorrow, okay.
Soon as Ms. Ormeo gets back from HR training at Laco.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
And to clarify, that's for ones that aren't just reclassifications of people that are already in their jobs. Okay. E, I'm not gonna get this right, Memorandum of Understanding with California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20, Change in Hours for Campus Assistance. The Board of Education is requesting- The Board of Education is requested to approve a Memorandum of Understanding with CSEA increasing the number of work hours for campus assistants from four to six hours per day. This Memorandum of Understanding will increase work hours for campus assistant positions.
Questions? I imagine it'll be easier to recruit and hire with six hours, is?
It will, and we did have some inconsistencies between campuses, where we had some four-hour and some six-hour positions, and making it's equitable for everyone by making everyone six hours.
Okay, thank you. There are no other questions?
One question, actually. Sorry, Vice President Travanti. So, reading over the range in which said employee will fall under, if that rate changes for next year, is this worded in a way that that will also be adjusted for them without us having to re, so wages automatically change for everybody if they're below the new minimum wage? That takes into effect 2026?
Oh, mid, their, their hourly wage, yes. That, that is a Dr. Giraud. If, if the minimum wage changes, how does that affect minimum wage employees for us?
I, I believe that it automatically, I'd have to investigate to make sure. I can get back to you on that, too.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that for any of the employees, and that's not to say, I just want to be clear that this, even though we're agreeing upon it today, 2025, if that does change 26, I want everybody who is entitled to that amount to get that new dollar amount. Thank you.
We can get clarification and report that back in a further Friday update.
Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Item F.
HR has been busy.
Very.
Approval of Retroactive Salary Adjustment Effective 7/1/2022, Classified Management and Confidential Employees. The Board of Education is requested to approve the revised salary schedule for classified management and confidential employees effective July 1, 2022. The updated salary schedule has been prepared to ensure proper alignment for these positions retroactively, starting from July 21, July 1, 2022.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Uh, yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item G.
E. Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding with California School Employee Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 Salary Schedule. The Board of Education is requested to approve Memorandum of Understanding, moving all CSEA members to a single unified salary schedule and fixing calculation errors in previous salary schedules dating back to July 1, 2022. All employees previously on the classified non-12-month salary schedule will move to the new unified salary schedule effective July 1, 2024.
Questions?
If we could, please, reviewing the squared salary schedule, I noticed the longevity down at the bottom. Was that not going to be included into the salary schedule?
I believe that's what we, we had approved prior, is yes, we moved their longevity instead of a stipend.
That's for, this is, that's for certificated. This is for, for, um, classified. Classified is paid differently.
We did not, okay, so that is not universal. It was specific to?
That was negotiated for certificated, not for classified.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion on Item G. Move to approve?
Second.
Just.
Second, re-second.
I retract.
Board Member Ocon?
Uh, yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
So, Item H is a public hearing for the initial proposals for the negotiations between the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 and the Monrovia Unified School District. So at this time, the Board of Education is requested to hold a public meet, hearing to allow public comments regarding the Sunshine Negotiation Proposal for the joint initial proposal topics for modification of the current CSEA District Collective Bargaining Agreement. So I will open the, uh, public hearing at 8:25 PM. Are there any, um, public comments?
There are none.
Thank you. Since there are none, I will close the open, um, or the public hearing at 8:26 PM. Okay. We move on to I, or is there something else I need to do here?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to I.
We'll move on to I.
Initial Proposal for Negotiations from the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 to the Monrovia Unified School District for the 2025-2026 school year. The Board of Education is requested to adopt the initial proposals for negotiations between the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 to the Monrovia Unified School District for the 25-26 school year. The California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 submits topics they wish to negotiate fulfilling the requirements of the sunshining provisions of the Educational Employment Relations Act and initiating re-opener bargaining for the collective bargaining agreements between Monrovia. That's not right. Between CSEA and the Monrovia Unified School District. There's a typo. Apologies. Between CSEA and Monrovia Unified School District.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Regarding opening negotiations with CSEA. Just to clarify, since the agenda item did say MTA towards the end, but it's definitely with CSEA.
Do we need to formally something?
No, it's fine, because the title is correct.
The actual title, agenda item, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Item J.
Initial Proposal for Negotiations from the Monrovia Unified School District to the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20. The Board of Education is requested to adopt the district's initial proposals for negotiations from the Monrovia Unified School District to the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 for the 2025-2026 school year. According to Government Code Section 3547, the Monrovia Unified School District hereby sunshines or submits the following initial proposals for negotiations to the California School Employee Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20. The district's interests and principles include furthering educational opportunities for our students, compliance with legal mandates, maintaining a financially responsible budget, and the continued retention and recruitment of quality staff and maintaining a collaborative relationship with CSEA. The district looks forward to a collaborative negotiation process with CSEA team for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just the, the letterhead, but I don't think that matters much.
That was corrected. Board Member Ocon?
Okay, the, the attachment, uh, was corrected. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, before we close this item, I do want to thank, uh, Dr. Landisfine for her leadership and the HR department, and also the leadership at both associations for coming together and getting all of this work done. As you can see, this was half an hour's worth of, uh, agenda items, so obviously a lot of work has been done in that area. So, uh, I want to say thank you. Pardon me? And the Personnel Commission, obviously everything needs to go through them, too, so thank, thanks to them. Uh, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
No. Board Business.
Resolution 2526-16, Recognizing the Month of October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month. The Board of Education is requested to adopt Resolution 2526-16, Recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month. Filipino-American History Month is celebrated in October each year to celebrate the first recorded president, presence of Filipinos in the continental U.S. Each year Filipino-American History Month is celebrated with a unique theme. This year's theme is from quotas to communities, Filipino-American migration and movements. A theme that commemorates the 90th anniversary of the 1935 Filipino Repatriation Act and the 60th anniversary of the 1965 Immigration Naturalization Act, reflecting on how restrictive laws shaped the journey of Filipino-Americans to building thriving communities and a living legacy.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Vice President Travanti?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, we've already done, uh, the goals earlier in the meeting. Future meeting dates, October 22 at 6:30, a regular Board of Education meeting. November 19, regular Board of Education meeting. And December 17 at 6:30, Annual Reorganization Meeting and Regular Board of Education Meeting. Please note that there's just one school board meeting in November and one in December. For new business, Monrovia, Monrovia Paths Meeting, October 16 at 6 o'clock at Monroe Elementary. Uh, local recess, November 10, all sites closed. And Veterans Day, November 11, all sites closed. So it sounds like a four-day weekend. All right, well deserved. Um, as Dr. Hart Rotus spoke to us early, um, and during her report, there will be middle school consolidation information meetings. Please check our website and communications, but they are listed here on the agenda. Clifton Middle School Auditorium, Thursday, October 23 at 1 o'clock. Tuesday, October 28 at 5:30 PM. And at Santa Fe Middle School Cafeteria, Tuesday, October 21, 2025, at 5:30 PM. And Tuesday, October 28 at, uh, at noon, it looks like. And then we have two virtual meetings. Let's see if I can read this. Friday, October 24 at 11 AM, and Monday, October 27 at 6 PM. Again, we will be socializing these on our social media and Parent Square, and, uh, we hope to see you there at those information meetings. Continuance of public comments, we didn't have a need for that, and so at this time, before I adjourn the meeting, we would like to close tonight's meeting by honoring the life and legacy of Coach Michael Knowles. Coach Knowles dedicated more than 40 years to coaching track and field, including the past 15 years as a head, as the head varsity track coach at Monrovia High School. A beloved mentor and leader, he had a unique gift for inspiring students, even those who never imagined themselves as athletes, to discover a passion for the sport and believe in their own potential. One of his closest friends said about him, "He was so unselfish that it sometimes upset me when he put others before himself. He once told me, 'I will get mine in the afterlife, but right now, I am needed.'" That selflessness defined who Coach Knowles was, a man who devoted his life to lifting others up. Our thoughts and prayers are with his wife, children, extended family, and the many friends, colleagues, and students whose lives he touched. Coach Knowles' legacy will continue to live on in every athlete he mentored and every heart he inspired. Thank you.